Good evening. We call this meeting of the Quincy City Council Monday, May 23rd to order and ask Madam Parker if you would please call the --
Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor Crowe.
Present.
Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Finn. Counselor Harris. Counselor Lawrence.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Calhoun.
Present.
President of the House.
Present.
You'll all stand and join me in momentous silence. For the brave men and women who serve our country here and abroad, and the thought of veterans past on this upcoming memorial day again. If you'll turn and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Parker, if you'll read the open meeting law.
Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21D. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make audio or video recording of a public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed unlawful in the rules of law.
Thank you, Madam Parker. All right, we will get started with our agenda this evening. I want Madam --
We have a presentation, 2016-135, Urban Revitalization and Development Plan, Amendment Number Four. Mr. Gary, you see it.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Gary.
Good evening, Madam President. And through you to the members of council, we actually do not have a presentation, so we're simply submitting to the council for its approval a proposed amendment entitled URDP Amendment Number Four. We expect it to be referred to committee, at which time we would please to make a full presentation on all of the elements of the URDP amendment. The materials that have been provided to you, there's a cover letter from the mayor that provides an executive summary of the most salient items that are being amended within the proposed amendment within the current URDP. There is a black-edged binder that recites all of the proposed amendments, and in the interest of full disclosure, there's a blue folder that contains the entire integrated URDP, which incorporates all of the amendments that have been made, thus five. I would recommend that there's a number document that I prepared for each of the counselors, which is a table of provisions to the integrated URDP, which runs at about 114 pages. Only 19 pages of that document are proposed to be amended, so I've included the list of the provisions, cross-referencing them between -- that's correct, this document here -- cross-referencing them between the proposed amendments and the integrated URDP document.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gary. Is there a -- yes, Counselor Lawrence.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Mr. Gary. Bill, this will be heard in the ordinance committee. Is there a timeline, or is the anticipation of the administration that this be voted before council recesses or summer?
Yes, it is the hope that that will occur, yes.
Right, well, the schedule of the meetings, I literally look through June 22nd, because we'll have a meeting in council business. Okay, you will work to schedule that meeting this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Lawrence. Anyone else wishing to speak? Counselor Calhoun.
Good evening, Bill. I presume that a copy of this was sent to Jim Shea?
Yes, I personally sent him a copy.
Okay, good. And I think it makes sense, we can't have the meeting earlier tonight just for the record, because we were going to be debating the URDP and the proposed amendment offered by Counselor Finn and I. It doesn't make sense to debate the URDP and then receive this an hour later and continue the debate. So it makes sense to do it all at one time, open it up, change anything we need to do, close it, and move forward.
Yes, Counselor.
So I appreciate everyone being willing to be flexible with that scheduling.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Calhoun. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, and we will refer this to ordinance and the downtown committees. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next item, Madam Parker.
Number two on the agenda, appropriation.
We have the reading. Move to finance.
All right, motion to waive and the appropriation move to finance. Thank you. Next item.
Number three on the agenda, appropriation, 2016-135.
We have the reading. Move to finance.
All right, motion to waive and, item number three, we refer to finance. Item number four, Madam Parker.
Update, 2016-122, five-year capital improvement plan.
Motion to waive every year and move to finance.
All right, motion to waive and it will be referred to finance. Thank you.
On the motion?
Very well, Counselor Calhoun, you start with that.
That's okay. This is for the five-year capital improvement plan?
Yes.
So I pass through you to Mr. Walker. I see, I want to receive an email at about 4:30 time that had those orders. I presume that's what we're referring to committee? Is that a yes?
That's a yes.
Okay, so that did not appear to cover everything that was in the presentation that the mayor made. Is it possible to get a breakdown of what was covered and what wasn't covered? Perhaps you can use that same, I don't know what the word for it, kind of like the bibliography, so to speak, of the presentation that the mayor gave, and break out what, from each section, what that covers and what's left over. I'm sure you know the given price of what's left over, but if you could at least break it out so we can visualize what's coming in and what isn't at this time.
Through you, Madam President. Absolutely, Counselor, that's been worked on now. There's a moving parts to it. We expect to have that for the full council, well before our finance committee meeting, probably within, before the end of this week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Calhoun. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, very well. Next item, Madam Parker. Next item.
Number five on the agenda, 2016-136, conveyance lien from the MTA in the vicinity of former Seville Street and city wall for municipal purposes. The city council has hereby authorized the mayor to accept --
Waive the reading.
Motion to waive the reading. Is there, should be, is there a motion to waive the reading? Counselor Crowe, motion to waive the reading? Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
All right.
On the motion?
On the motion.
Can somebody, can someone explain what this is?
Yes.
I read it, it's not clear to me. I read it, it's not clear to me.
One moment, sure, one moment. So I believe Ms. Assistant City Solicitor Peckham is here, but I don't know that she's here to speak to this. Mr. Walker, is this something that you can speak to?
It is not, no.
Very well. This is something that Ms. Peckham can speak to. Is there?
This is what I was looking at as you asked me. I mean, I don't see it at all. So you're attached with this landing base, so I'm not sure that the appropriate committee will be finance.
Without any, I kind of had the floor up. Without any additional information, we can't send it to a committee. No one's here to make a, without any additional information as to what this requires, its finance, its ordinance, and without anyone here to make a presentation on it, I suggest just size it and feel it can be --
Laying the table to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's proper, because I don't even know that it needs to go to a committee, to be honest, but I'm not 100% sure, so we will let that lay the table to the next meeting. Thank you. Item number six, Madam Parker.
Ordinance, 2016-137. Be it a date with the city council, in City Quincy Title 15, as amended, be further amended to add new section, section 15.28, entitled Wage Deficiency. Definition.
Counselor Lawrence. Motion to waive the reading. Motion to waive the reading, Counselor Lawrence. On motion, Counselor Calhoun.
I drafted this, Counselor DeBona is co-sponsoring it. I'd ask, it's a, it's further work relative to the underground economy that we've been working on in the Oversight Committee. This is, this mirrors state language, or language of state legislation that's currently pending in the Senate, which actually Senate Bill 966, which I have a resolve, further down Agenda Item Number 10. I'll waive the reading, we'll waive the reading for this tonight. I'd ask that it be referred to ordinance and oversight, and we'll add it to our ongoing hearings on the underground economy and for action at a later date.
Thank you very much, Counselor Calhoun. Refer to ordinance and oversight. Thank you very much. Next item, Madam Parker.
7 on the agenda, 2016-135, be it a date that the City of Quincy accept the following gifts upon admission to tax, in the area in which set forth various donors, $2,350 for the D.A. program.
Motion to accept the gift.
Accept the gift and send the letter of art. Thank you.
Motion to accept by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor DeBona. On motion, Counselor Crowe?
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
President of the House.
Yes. Next item.
Next number, next item is number eight, gift, 2016-139, be it a date that the City --
We have the reading.
Motion. Motion to accept the gift and write it out in the name by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor DeBona. On motion, if you call the rule.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
President of the House.
Next is a gift, 2016-141, $1,000 for the year.
All right, motion to waive the reading, motion to accept the gift, and write it out in the name by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor DeBona. On motion, if you call the rule.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
No.
President of the House.
Yes.
Next item.
Next item is number 10 on the agenda, which is 2016-141, resolved in support of Massachusetts Seville 966, an act to prevent and promote employer accountability. Resolution, we support Massachusetts Seville 966, an act to prevent --
Wait a minute.
Motion to waive the reading by Counselor Calhoun. On motion, Counselor?
Yes, I'd ask that we consider this for the body, and if folks are comfortable with it, it's relatively non-controversial, I think, in terms of, it's a resolve, not actually executing any type of policy, just saying we support the Senate bill. Included a copy of the Senate bill for everyone's review prior to the meeting tonight. This is, again, it's an act to prevent wage deficit and promote employer accountability. This speaks directly to the matter that we've been considering for several months in the Oversight Committee, which deals with subcontractors and sub-vendors of general contractors and the, some of the manners in which the less reputable outfits operate, the, all of the individuals, by and large, all of the individuals who have presented testimony before the Oversight Committee hearing relative to this issue are in support of this. It's one of the things that, if you recall, the, how recall, was the IFB representative, the fraud bureau representative, or the insurance company representatives, but they had spoken to, it was the Assistant Attorney General who spoke. She said, "There's some additional enforcement options, putting more tools in their toolbox to go after these, these unscrupulous companies that take advantage of workers, that don't have proper safety on work sites, and don't pay their employees." This would, this Senate bill would give the state more tools to go after those individuals, to track down the owners of those individuals, and hold them liable for their wayward behavior. So I would urge that the body support this. Normally, I would put it into committee, so that we can continue to have hearings on the Oversight, and add it to the list of things we're doing in the Oversight Committee relative to the underground economy, but knowing the way the legislature works, sometimes things can go pretty quickly up there, so I think it's important for us to show our support for this and hope that the legislature passes it, the Senate passes it in the House Act before the, before the end of this current session. So I would urge support, I'll vote in support of it, and ask my colleagues to do the same.
All right, thank you, Counselor Calhoun. Counselor Crowe? I mean, I mean, sorry.
We all agree.
I put Crowe's --
Through you, Madam President, to Counselor Calhoun. Do you know where this is currently?
I don't.
Okay, so if we were to put this in committee, would this be holding up? I'd rather have a full discussion than just put something else regarding this into committee, so I'd rather have the full discussion put here before, you know, we indicate a full body's passage of this support.
Yeah, the ordinance that we put in 2016-137 would be amending our Title 15 to reflect this similar language. While I agree in terms of an ordinance, before we change municipal policy and hold people to a different standard than what we've currently been holding them to, that would require hearings, a resolution in support of a Senate bill, I don't think requires the same level of scrutiny. I appreciate your, your comments and your concerns. If you're not comfortable voting for it, I appreciate that. I don't have a problem with however you end up voting for it, but I think it's, it's relatively straightforward, and I would, I would seek a more honor this evening.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, I won't hold this up.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Counselor King. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, is there, is there a second?
Two.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Liang on the resolved. Madam Parker, if you call the rule.
Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
President of the House.
Present. All right, six members. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
Madam President.
Yes, Counselor Calhoun.
Could I ask that a copy of that vote be sent to our state delegation?
Yes, thank you. Madam Parker.
Next on the agenda, item number 10, a resolve, 2016-14, oh, excuse me, number 11, resolve, 2016-142, for administration to review and evaluate Mass General Law 1218 Tax Incentive for the Quincy Center District Revitalization.
Waive the reading.
Motion to waive the reading, Counselor Calhoun, on motion.
This is a resolve asking that the administration and the planning department review and evaluate the use of 1218 tax incentive, the tax incentive program for the downtown redevelopment. I think this goes hand in hand with some of the discussions that we've been having up here, not just this session, but in the previous sessions. As some may recall, the city had obtained special legislation to do with a reverse 1218, under the LDA with streetworks and the downtown development deal whereby properties developed in that area would pay a value-added tax, which was an opposite, so rather than the city providing a tax incentive, essentially a tax discount, to folks who built in that target area, we were paying, they were paying us extra. Well, obviously, the realities on the ground have changed significantly, we're all aware of that. What, what I'm seeking to do here is to broaden the discussion. We've, we've been talking, we were supposed to have a meeting this evening about the covenant in the URDP. The covenant is what allows the mayor to negotiate specifically with the developers to encourage growth downtown. The URDP sets out the policy in that URDP, it spells out monies to go into the art fund, that affordable housing is a priority, although there's no specific requirement for affordable housing other than stating that it's a priority for the downtown redevelopment, and also that, what's the term, the parking fund, that developers will pay into the parking fund. In the three projects that have been permitted thus far, there's been no payment of monies into, there's been no affordable housing, there's been no payment into the art fund, and there's been no payment into the parking fund. The only thing I think there's, other than the self-parking for the housing in Cliveden Street project, I think the only other accommodation is that there is going to be one designated parking space in the west of Chestnut, east of Chestnut parking for a zip car that the public will have access to. I've spoken out a number of times to my displeasure at, at the way in which we negotiate as a city, I don't feel as though the taxpayers getting the full advantage of that, of that development that's occurring in those three projects, because ultimately, it's the taxpayer that's going to have to pay for these parking garages. You know, if you lose out on affordable housing, that's a policy issue. You lose out on the art, public spaces downtown, that's, that's a policy issue. But when you come down to the parking garages and the parking structures that we're going to have to create, and we have a document that says, you know, all of this, the infrastructure, the parking garage is going to cost the taxpayers $116 million. So what this seeks to do is to put another tool into the toolbox for this body, for the administration, for the planning department, moving forward with the downtown development to balance the priorities and balance the policy, the policy goals downtown. Essentially, what a 1218 tax incentive would do for this area is it would incentivize development in the area, so perhaps the way that I would like to see it used is rather than incentivizing development downtown by not, by agreeing in the covenant to waive the art fund, the affordable housing piece, and contributions to the parking structures and the parking needs downtown, that these developers, the next developer comes, pays into those funds at a full rate, so the taxpayers won't have to on the upfront, and then they get, they get a benefit in the back end where they have a discounted real estate tax moving forward, whatever the term may be, whatever the amount may be. But I think it's, I think it's key that if we're going to successfully develop downtown, we need to weigh these policies and these, these policy goals against the economic realities. We're no longer in a position where people are going to pay us extra taxes for the downtown. We're in a position now where to incentivize growth downtown, in this period if we all agree needs to be redeveloped, it's great for the city, the downtown engine that drives the city for decades to come, but we need to put some more things on the table, perhaps not giving away these policy initiatives, these policy goals, these policy principles that we've all agreed upon in that URDP, not giving away in the front end, but rather giving a tax incentive in the back end to these developers. And at the very least, even if that's not the direction that the administration chooses to take with this, it at least gives the mayor another tool in the planning department, another tool in the toolbox to invite developers in and try and incentivize the right kind of growth downtown. Perhaps we need better projects if we can incentivize long-term tax relief projects. They don't have to make the money with density or in other ways, that we could use this as an incentive to develop the downtown in a, in a way that's more consistent with the policy goals that the administration, the council, and the community have all the doors they passed. So that's the reason behind the resolve. The resolve itself just asks the administration and the planning department to take a look at this and report back to us at some point if it makes sense, how can we best use it, 1218 program, and really just take a look at it and report back to us. So it's not asking for any action to be taken, other than the planning department of the administration to explore this, which I, in conversation with Mr. Walker, I understand that it's, it's certainly not something that's foreign to them, they're, they're aware of this, they're already, they're already thoughts and ideas, I think, about how to utilize the 1218 tax incentives, but perhaps having them come back to us, even in some brief format, perhaps with the, when we're talking about the URDP on the next ordinance committee date, is a little bit more of a formal process, but I wish to fill us in on what their current thinking is for how best to utilize 1218 tax incentives. So I would vote for this, and I encourage my colleagues to do the same. I think it, it opens up the debate a little bit more about, about how best to develop downtown and how best to encourage it, and, and my hope, how best to achieve those policy goals that the mayor, the council, and the community have all addressed before in the past.
Thank you, Counselor Calhoun. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor King. Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam President. I think this is a great idea, I think it's always, you know, good to take an opportunity to sharpen those pencils and think of how we can, you know, best be positioning ourselves to grow the downtown area, especially as we have a couple of other large financial plans that have been put in front of us. I just want to add and ask that this incentive plan that was presented in March of 2015, a copy of that, be included, we'll present it separately, so we can just take a look at that for this next analysis that's set forth, so. Thanks very much for using this, Counselor Calhoun. And also, thanks, Madam Parker.
Yes, Counselor King. Yes, Counselor Calhoun.
It's funny that, it's funny that you say that you're referring to what I was seeing that Redgate presented to us, that --
In March of this, in your third.
Right, that's the, I've referenced it a couple of times, I think with the board and council as well. There's a presentation that Redgate gave us, we actually rolled back at the beginning of the meeting, because the packet that we were given this evening for the URDP has Redgate's analysis, which was, which dated a little bit contemporaneously, and I was, I was asking him whether or not this was a deeper analysis than what we got, was that just a presentation I had? So I think we actually may have it, but I'll leave it to Mr. Fatsis to make sure if we don't, that we get a copy, we all get a copy of that other, that other piece too. But I think, I think what we have, what presented to tonight, presented with tonight, is a little bit of a deeper dive than what I've been referring to for the past few weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Crowe. If you'll, Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President. And kudos to you, Counselor Calhoun. I mean, for me personally, I think these are substantive discussions that we should be having as a, as a city. Many times, there's a potential to mitigate risk on behalf of the taxpayer, I certainly believe that that's a conversation that can work some serious damage. What I would be curious to see, and maybe this is just kind of an ask, you know, we're talking about backend 1218 payment, obviously, the downtown is dependent upon the net new commercial growth that takes place, so I'd be curious, and I don't know what the, what the 1218 would be, but I'd be curious to see what those revenue projections would look like on the backend, because we all know this plan is designed to be fully self-supported through the growth. But I hear you, I mean, I like the upfront, you know, potential to, you know, maybe get some risk on behalf of the taxpayer, so thank you for taking the initiative, you know, taking through this and putting it on the table before the body, I'll be voting in support of it as well, so. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Crowe. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, so the motion seconded by Councilor Kane on the motion, Madam President.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor Cole.
Yes.
Councilor Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Vaughn.
Councilor Lee.
Yes.
Councilor Calmwood.
Yes.
President.
Yes. Thank you. All right, that ends our agenda for this evening. Next, we can move to approval of previous minutes, meeting minutes, the April 25th meeting minutes, as well as the May 2nd meeting minutes, they had the time specs. Is there a motion to accept? Motion to accept by Councilor Vaughn, seconded by Councilor Cole. All those in favor?
Aye.
Communications and reports from the mayor, other city officials and city boards. Madam Park.
I have some UTRAP reports, referred to ordinance committee for advertising, Ward One at Handicap Parking at 1590 Mount Road, at a stop sign on Manadav Southbound by Biden Station in Central WSB Street, and a no left turn on Thomas Street, Southbound on the first Snack Harbor School, Lockawatt, Ward Two, Councilor Cole.
Councilor Forrest.
Just, I just wanted to remind anyone listening at home on that, the Thomas Street North Charm is a snack park school, there's a traffic initiative that the Manadav South Side is an African house initiative, Snack Harbor has a deal with the letters who wrote up in, including June 16th and 6th, letters to regard those traffic changes. So just want, not to make anybody be surprised, it's okay, as usual now.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Forrest.
At a stop sign on Rutherford Street, Eastbound 52nd with Madison Ave, Ward Three, Councilor Kane, at no parking on the north side of West One Street, from Evans Street to Montclair Ave, Ward Five, Councilor Hughes, at Handicap Parking at 191 Fennel Street.
Thank you very much. So refer to ordinance for advertising, yes?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Anything further, Madam Park?
Yes, we also have three grants of easement and location for utilities at North Quincy High School Athletic Field expansion project. Comcast, Mass Electric in Horizon respectfully request the city council for the granted location for purposes of excavating the public highways and run and maintain underground electric conduits to the intersection.
Motion to waive the reading, read my Council of Lords. So we'll refer those to Public Works and Advertisers. Thank you.
We also have correspondence from Senator John E. Keenan, a letter to Senate Ways and Means Committee, Chairman Cameron Spriglin, supporting Senate Bill 1767, an act requiring gas feed periods during certain road projects in response to order number.
Motion to waive the reading by Councilor Forrest. We appreciate Senator Keenan's letter and appreciate all of his work. We will place it on file in the first office, order number 2016-0057. All right. Thank you very much, Madam Park. Any unfinished business from preceding meetings? Seeing none, very well. Reports of committees, ordinance committee, yes? Council of Lords.
Thank you. Okay, in Ward One, Councilor 26-112, to add a one-way on Manadav, Southbound and C Street, intersection with Darrow Street, and motion, and positive recommendation, and then on the motion.
All right, motion, possible recommendation, motion made, seconded by Councilor Liang, on the motion, Council of Lords.
Madam President, so this is an initiative of the African House, African House, it's the section of Manadav between C Street and Darrow, it has a do not enter for on Darrow Street, but it's not officially a one-way, so it's kind of a housekeeping measure, so it's not really a change, it's an opportunity to add signage, so positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation. The motion's made, seconded by Councilor Liang, in good discussion on the motion, seeing none, Madam President.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor Cole.
Yes.
Councilor Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Forrest.
Yes.
Councilor Lee.
Yes.
Councilor Calmwood.
Yes.
President James.
Also, in Ward One, Councilor 2016-113, to remove handicap parking at Squatter Road at 1327, busy short drive intersection, and a positive recommendation.
All right, positive recommendation by Councilor Forrest, seconded by Councilor Liang, on the motion. All right, very well, Madam President.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor Cole.
Yes.
Councilor Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Forrest.
Yes.
Councilor Lee.
Yes.
Councilor Calmwood.
Yes.
President James.
Yes.
In Ward Two, Councilor 2016-114, to remove handicap parking at 75 Adamon Ave, and a positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation, seconded by Councilor Liang, on the motion, in discussion, Madam President.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor Cole.
Yes.
Councilor Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Forrest.
Yes.
Councilor Lee.
Yes.
Councilor Calmwood.
Yes.
President James.
Yes.
In Ward Three, Councilor 2016-115, to add a handicap parking sign at 113 Stafford Street, and a positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation by Councilor Forrest, seconded by Councilor Liang, on the motion and in discussion, seeing none, Madam President.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor Cole.
Yes.
Councilor Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Forrest.
Yes.
Councilor Lee.
Yes.
Councilor Calmwood.
Yes.
President James.
Yes.
In Ward Five, Councilor 2016-116, to remove handicap parking at 33 Omo Road, and a positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation made by Councilor Forrest, seconded by Councilor Liang, on the motion, seeing none, Madam President.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor Cole.
Yes.
Councilor Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Forrest.
Yes.
Councilor Lee.
Yes.
Councilor Calmwood.
Yes.
President James.
Yes.
In Ward Five, Councilor 2016-117, add a no parking sign on the north side of 101 Ave and Seawall Street, AD8/AB11, and a positive recommendation. Positive recommendation by Councilor Forrest, seconded by Councilor Harris, on the motion.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor Cole.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Forrest.
Yes.
Councilor Lee.
Yes.
Councilor Calmwood.
Yes.
President James.
Yes.
Okay, last one, in Ward Six, Councilor 2016-118, a stop sign on Hollis Ave, Westbound, intersection with, intersection with Hancock Street, and a positive recommendation. Positive recommendation by Councilor Forrest, seconded by Councilor Harris, on the motion. All right, in discussions, seeing none, Madam President.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor Cole.
Yes.
Councilor Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Forrest.
Yes.
Councilor Lee. Councilor Calmwood.
Yes.
Yes. Very well, thank you. Thank you, Councilor Forrest. Presentation of petitions, memorials, or remonstrance. Seeing none, very well, we will move to motions, orders, and resolutions. Seeing none, all right, very respected. Scheduling of committee meetings or public hearings. Yes, Councilor Forrest.
Okay, we had had a ordinance made, SWAT held for June 6th at 6:45, let's move that to six, this is now going to be URDP number four, and we require a public hearing, so... Public hearing six, followed by committee, I feel, you know, it is an update we've had. Oh wait. So, Madam Advertisers, we have, at the number six, additional quarters on, I know it's tight, but a lot of us have, they've already built, to sweeten the idea of recess, so on June 6th, the alternative was to come after graduation. But I think we want to go to four, any quarters, June 8th, and may have, they're going to be doing a red agenda, to do what's best for us to have our hearing first, and if we need to continue it.
Yes.
Public hearing, we'll put a public hearing at six, because do you think we're going to need, instead of going to council start, we have?
Well, we, yeah.
We, that's going to be a busy council, agenda.
Yeah.
We have to roll in.
Yeah, we have to, we have to get to it, and then we come back, yeah.
Let's try to start, and then we might have to continue, so we have.
All right, so six o'clock, Monday, June 6th, public hearing, and ordinance committee on URDP at 6:30.
Is that URDP three and four?
No, four.
Just left four.
Yes, Councilor Calmwood.
We would need to, someone needs to reach out to Jim Shea, our attorney, to make sure that he works for him, I don't know who's going to be presenting.
I know he's aware.
Perhaps just Bill.
I know he's aware that this is coming up.
Yes, but I don't know if you can be here on the sixth, if we're going to have a substantive debate, discussion on the URDP, anything beyond a public hearing, a simple presentation, we should have our attorney present. So we should just, so we should just double check if you can make that.
I guess the alternative would be, then be the 13th and 14th.
Yeah, after graduation, maybe you should do those things anyway, first, other things anyway.
Okay, so let's go for six and none.
Yep.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you, Councilor Forrest. Yes, Councilor Cole.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to reiterate to the folks here this evening, through some discussion, and obviously people's ability, that to be present, we made a decision to move the traffic, parking, and lighting proposal for the fiscal year '17 budget, along with the fire department and Public Works. All three of those entities will be moved to June 8th at 6:30 PM. And then obviously, everyone saw before us this evening, there were a couple additional financial items that came in, being the orders around the capital improvement plan, as well as the repurposing of the North Quincy High School gymnasium. So, Councilor Forrest, I alluded to it, schedules are getting more and more complex, so I'm going to propose for the off-budget financial items, June 15th at 6:30. Correct. That would, that would be the repurposing of the North Quincy High School, excuse me, of the bonds of the North Quincy Gymnasium as well, as the, how many orders are in there this afternoon, press, I didn't see the email yet. Eleven? Eleven. I beg your pardon?
You don't want to do the third term graduation.
I don't think we'll have time, right? Huh?
We want to have a graduation.
I don't think so.
So you should have, you should have a consummated after, so that's why I was saying.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that moved?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'd rather do it that, I mean, I'm not trying to be.
No, 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 I'm, I'm open now, right? Right, so we're on room. What's due for 13th at 6:30?
I think that's, I think, maybe we could do it at seven. Oh no, I think we could do seven. I think we need to do seven, because I don't think it would be all by.
Okay. Seven o'clock.
We, we are 5:30, so. Yeah, we don't have a consummated, we usually do that evening.
Correct, we do.
We probably do, we could split, do seven fifteen.
Sounds good.
But we could do seven thirty, just to be safe, so, and, I mean, nobody wants to rush out as a group on mass graduation, so maybe seven thirty, we should set up seven thirty. Yep, okay. Is that okay, Councilor Cole, I know what your committee is.
I'm very flexible, I just want to take our time, ask questions, and, right.
Yep, okay. All right, good enough. Any further?
All set, thank you, Madam President.
Seeing none, thank you, Councilor Cole. All right, you can talk about it. Madam Park, did you want to address public hearings for Hunt Street?
Yes, yes, so we're looking to set up two public hearings for the Hunt Street project at North Quincy High School, and if we could get there a little earlier on that, I think?
On June 6th.
On June, or hearings there, 15, or around 17, we could do them as well, just two public hearings, Horizon.
When we do them, at seven fifteen and seven twenty, and then we'll all graduate at graduation night on the 13th, at seven fifteen and seven twenty.
I'm going to feel like we're company in Horizon.
Please, Councilor Cole.
Trish, before we go on to, before we adjourn, can we go, I don't know, and I don't know if you're done, if our some additions are due, but just could we go back at some point to petitions, memorials, or remonstrance, I think we skipped that part, I don't know, I didn't hear you say it, I apologize if I didn't, but, so when we're done with scheduling the meetings, if we could go back to that.
Oh, you missed it, yeah. All right, any other further committee meetings that need to be scheduled? Very well, just like my husband, you don't have on my every word, that much, go right ahead.
Just like.
Give me the floor.
Thank you, and just like with my wife, I only listen to the things I want to listen to from you. I just wanted to take an opportunity, it's a bit of a memorial, as well as a remonstrance, the passing and the duty of an Auburn police officer, Lou Weekend, Tom Tarantino, I think it's appropriate for every community, including ours, even over far from Auburn, to take note of his passing and sacrifice of service, and take note of the risks and dangers that our first responders, firefighters, WMTs, your serviceability, and especially our police officers, the risks that they take every night on our behalf, going into homes where they don't know what's going on, pulling cards over, responding to emergencies, it really puts into focus what a dangerous job it is, I think, I think we all, as a whole, individually, you take that for granted, you know, you call 911, and you're going to get the help you need, and I think we take for granted the difficulties of that job, the risk that those individuals take upon themselves, and ultimately, the sacrifices that their families make in this, this individual, Officer Tarantino in Auburn, about my age, he's about 41, has young children, it's really just a tragedy, so I ask that we keep him and his family in our thoughts and prayers tonight, as well as the procedure where we shot, and his pretended apprehension of the individual who shot Officer Tarantino, who, my understanding, is incredibly wounded, but we keep all of our first responders, especially the Tarantino family, in our thoughts and prayers as we can.
Thank you, Councilor Calmwood. Thank you, Councilor Calmwood. Anything else? Councilor Vaughn. Okay, Councilor Cole.
It's with a heavy heart that, you know, to remember this evening, the passing of Bobby Buggah Walberg, son of a long-time community activist, Rosemary, in RG. Bobby was a, was a good friend of my family, particularly my father, everybody knew Bobby, I think that was more than ever, at the weight, he was a very, very dynamic guy, always had a smile on his face, lifelong Quincy resident, oh, he was a dad, he was a junior pipe fighter, and, you know, most importantly, he was, he was a good guy, concerned with you guys, and I just wanted to, at the moment, reflect that our thoughts are with the Walberg family in this, in this, in this.
Thank you, Councilor Cole. Councilor Vaughn.
Thank you, Madam President. If I could get back to the communications, I just want to, want to thank Mr. Walker, the administration, as well as the mayor for giving a monthly report of the teal field that we received today, I want to thank you, it's, it's a nice.